Good evening. I call to order this joint work session of the Gladstone City Council and the Gladstone School Board. This is Michael Milch, Mayor, and also here is Donna Diggs, Chair of the School Board. The City of Gladstone is abiding by guidelines set forth in House Bill 2560, which requires the governing body of the public body, to the extent reasonably possible, to make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means and provide opportunity for members of the general public to remotely submit oral and written testimony during meetings, to the extent in-person oral and written testimony is allowed. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public, both in-person and virtually using the Zoom platform. The public is welcome to attend the work session in-person or online. However, no public comment will be allowed. So we'll begin by going around introducing ourselves, and then we'll do the flag salute after that. So I will start at my right and work my way around counterclockwise.
Good evening. I'm Jackie Betts, City Administrator.
Hi, I'm Nicole Quackenbush. I'm in Position Six for the School Board.
Luke Roberts, Gladstone City Council President.
Elsa Long, Position Five on the School Board.
Gabrielle Blough, Position Three on the Gladstone City Council.
Tracy Obergrant, Gladstone School Board, Position Seven.
Greg Alexander, Gladstone City Council, Seat Two.
Stacy Moncrief, Gladstone School Board.
Vanessa Huckabee, Gladstone City Council.
Matt Parkin, Gladstone School Board.
Charlie Chu, Gladstone School Board.
Jeremiah Patterson, Superintendent of the School District.
Donna Diggs, Gladstone School Board Chair.
And I will note that Sierra Cook and Mindy Garland, city councilors, asked to be excused for the meeting tonight. So let's stand for the flag salute, please.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I'm glad we've been able to continue this tradition of meeting jointly three or four times a year to learn about things that are going on under each other's purview, to become well-informed, and perhaps to consider ways that we can work cooperatively with one another. And so we have an agenda of things that are going on right now and kind of alternating between reports from the school district and from the city staff. And so we'll begin with, we've done our introduction of members, so we'll go to a school district report regarding the property acquisition on 82nd Drive, the bus barn.
Thank you very much. It felt appropriate to bring to you a follow-up because last fall, when we met, we discussed an option that would have been more impactful to the community had we needed to chase down that option. You'll remember that the problem, kind of the problem statement here, was that the longtime leasing of the property that we have historically leased for our buses passed away. And the property sold, the school district attempted to make a purchase of that property about two years ago. We weren't not, we were not successful in that. We were outbid. And we went to work creating the plan that was presented to you all last fall. If we didn't have a bus barn, especially one close by, we would have had to utilize another property owned by our vendor, first student, quite far away and pay the mileage, pay the time for those drivers back and forth each day. It would have been very expensive. So there's a lack of commercial land available for leasing Gladstone, as most of you know, as all of you know probably better than me. The State School Fund Transportation Grant allows for 70% grant funding for transportation expenses, including the purchase and improvement of property when needed. So we took a close look at the existing property. We had the site plan. This is for the existing, so this is prior to when it became our property. Did a review of that plan, completed a civil survey, evaluated the site, and determined that it was suitable for the purpose it's been used for for years, decades. Site plan was reviewed by the City of Gladstone through a pre-application meeting on November 9th. We had a traffic study initiated, planned to completing, are completing a conditional use permit application to request land use approval. I'm conflating things a little bit. This is for the, would have been to $2.2 million for, this is what would have happened for the property that we were discussing earlier. So I used the past tense of some of those, and that not the case. In any case, we got a reach out from the new owner of the property, was unable to use it for the purposes that they wanted to use it for. The board convened to discuss that and named two board directors to be the reviewers of that transaction, should it come to be. We were able to engage with that business owner and ultimately secure the property for a value far less than the $2.2 million that it would have cost on the existing property behind the stadium. We were concerned, as I think some of you probably were as well, about the impact on neighbors, on the neighborhood. It was a sound plan, but the fact that we're able to use the property and take ownership of the property so close by in a commercial industrial neighborhood felt much better to all of us. So we were able to complete that transaction and very happy to report that we didn't need to make any impact on the city.
Some of you who weren't around may recall that the alternative proposal involved using some land, how would I describe it, behind the stadium?
Behind the stadium and next to the, adjacent to what we use as a maintenance yard right now.
Okay, so that would have been close to a lot of residential property and in the center of our downtown, really. And buses going through there, as many, I discovered you have, what, 18, 20 buses or more?
The fleet has shrunk a little bit, but I think it's 17.
Okay.
I'll have to verify the number.
So off-site sounds better. Any questions or comments from councilors? Councilor Alexander?
When you said behind the original plan was a $2.2 million?
Yes.
So what kind of savings did we get on?
This property costs 1.875.
What was the use that was denied? What were they looking to do there that they couldn't?
The business owner's line of business is in party supplies, so large format blow-up things. So I don't know exactly, I don't know the detail of what he wasn't able to achieve there that he decided he needed to sell it.
Interesting. Thank you.
All right, item number three is the new Gladstone Library slash Old Library. Presentation from the city on this.
Do you want to talk about the new library and I'll take the old library?
Okay. Well, as you know, for a large number of years, getting a new library in Gladstone has been an important priority of the city. Back in 2008, the county developed a countywide property tax to support library services that included funds that would help local cities develop their libraries. And Gladstone was designated as a library city back then with the responsibility of developing a library to serve both Gladstone and the unincorporated Clackamas County communities of Jennings Lodge and Oak Lodge. And in the interim, there has been a Gladstone library that was around since 1962 and a leased building on McLaughlin that houses what's called the Oak Lodge Library. And you all, some of you were around before I was and know more of this history about the local community, you know, deciding not to follow through with some original plans that would have built a library on the current site of what's now the Gladstone Nature Park. And it resulted in a couple of, a couple of charter amendments to the city requiring a vote of the public on getting libraries. And, you know, to bring it forward, the city thought we were going to get more money from the county to build a local library than we did, even after the citizens rejected the plans that we had. And so the city sued the county, the county countersued the city. We went back and forth on a settlement, and it turned out to be really kind of a win-win settlement agreement. The county agreed to build a library in the city of Gladstone, about 6,000 square feet, which is one-half square foot per person in the population. And also agreed to build a library to serve the Oak Lodge, Jennings Lodge area. So it is a building, I would say. It is, they call it a one-library, two-building solution. And the library for Gladstone was, after some delays during the pandemic and requirement of getting funding from the federal government and state government and other sources, it was completed and opened last month. And it has been very popular with the community. We've seen a lot of people there. And as I understand it, people in, or the programs that were started at Storytime, STEM programs for children have been very popular with people in the community. In fact, we're getting better turnout for the programs here than they're currently getting at the Oak Lodge Library because that building is, wasn't really intended to be a library in the first place, kind of a leased building, difficult to find parking for young families along a very busy street. So right now, Gladstone Library and to some extent Milwaukee Library are getting some of the people who would have gone to the Oak Lodge Library. But that library is about a year away from completion on a site that used to be a school in the Clackamas School District and is now going to be a park and a library and a community center on Concord Street in Oak Grove. So that's where we are now. Finally, that library is complete, and it leaves us with an older building that used to be our library, that's very close to our Portland Avenue downtown area. And so the city council will have some decision-making to do regarding what happens with that building. And I'll turn this part over to Jackie Betts.
Sure. So how many of you been in the new library? It's phenomenal. It is. And the number one question we are now getting is, what are you going to do with the old space? And remember, we, for many years, told the public that this building needs to be condemned. It probably has asbestos, it has lead and all of that in there. So we're not sure we're going to be able to allow another group to use the building. So the first thing that the city is going to do is we're going to take back ownership. So we have a meeting set up with Clackamas County, second week of November. Public Works oversees city facilities, so Public Works and myself will go do a site inspection, and then I'll really have an idea of what it looks like inside. And there may be some furniture and items in there that are still usable. So we want to get an idea of what's in there, and then we will probably hire somebody to come in and do just a quick environmental assessment. We don't want to spend a lot of money on that, especially if we're not going to invest in the building. But that will give us an idea of how bad it is there. We don't really have an interest in selling the property that's left inside of the building, but we're trying to put together a fair and equitable process to whether or not we just say, on this day, we're going to open it up. Nonprofits, if you want, to come and look at whether or not there's bookshelves or chairs that you want. So we're working through that thoughtfully. And the other piece is, when we built the new Public Works facility, we had old furniture left over from that building too. So we may try to condense it all down there, open it up for the public. But we do want to focus maybe on nonprofits where there's a need for them to have some of the surplus property. And then like the mayor said, we'll have a new city council in January when they go through their goal setting. We're going to talk about getting public input based on what the environmental assessment of the building is. Do you want to lease it out to a nonprofit? Do you want to do what's called a development offering where we put out a request for proposals and we hear from developers on what they would like to do with the property? Because the city owns the property, we could partner with somebody to do something that maybe we want as a city to have there. So it won't be a quick process, but I do think it will be a focus in 2025 to explore what the options are and also to get an appraisal of what the property's value is.
I'll just add one more thing because Jackie's initial comment reminded me of it. She talked about taking back ownership of the old library property. Part of the settlement agreement was that the two libraries, the Gladstone Library and the Oak Lodge Library, are Clackamas County libraries. They have one library director over both of them, and the staff, most of the staff work at both facilities. So that means that this new library is currently owned by the county, and the property that it sits on is city property. There are procedures within that settlement agreement that would allow the city at some point to resume ownership of that library. However, one of the conditions under that would be that if the city were to take over the library, the tax revenue that supports the library now extends into much of the region outside our city boundaries of unincorporated areas who are in what's called the library service area for Gladstone. We would lose the tax revenue for the unincorporated community and only have the tax revenue within the city. City's already contributing well over $200,000 a year toward the annual operational costs of the library. To lose more county income would have an impact on our ability to continue operating. But it is right now a county library in the city of Gladstone. However, we reserve the status of a library city when it comes to representation on county-level committees and boards that deal with library activity. And the county library board that serves both the Gladstone and the Oak Lodge branch has a meeting scheduled for this coming Monday night, and they are meeting for the first time in the new Gladstone Library building. So if any of you have an interest in libraries, that's a good place to hear about what's going on. We're well, both communities are well-represented on that board, and we'll be making good decisions about how we go forward. I did not give enough credit to the task force that was formed about five or six years ago to make some of the decisions on the design and the values that would be incorporated into the construction of the new library. But I think you'll agree, as I said during my speech at the opening day, they did a great job. The architects and builders who put it together really captured those values in what they came up with. And I think the city can be very proud of the result.
I do have to say, I got a chuckle because we leased the property to the county for $1 a year, and their finance director emailed our finance director and asked if we would like a check or direct deposit this year. So they are paying, I will just say.
I have two things.
Yes.
First, the event on a couple of weeks ago on a Saturday was absolutely delightful, the grand opening. It was, I missed your speech, but I got there to see several of our board directors, all kinds of folks from the city, but best of all, our students and our future students. And everybody found their nook in the library, just as it seemed to me, just as it was designed. And the energy in that building and the community pride was palpable, and it made me really happy. It was wonderful.
I noticed the first week that opened, the teen area, for example, you know, the kids planted themselves in those chairs, and you could tell they felt, this is our space. This is a space that was designed for us, and we belong here. And I had heard from students at the elementary school in the year prior to it, I can't wait for that new library to open. And it's close to everything. It's close to the cookie pot. It's close to the shave ice place. Having that, one of the decisions that our task force has made over the year was to put the library on Portland Avenue, close to the schools. Families are walking over with their children right after school from the elementary school to get there. And I think kids on the bus from the middle school are probably getting off at the bus stop right there too and able to come in. So it is serving the community already, and it has that kind of a feel to it. This is, it's a community space. It's a place for connections. And so I'm glad you made that observation the very first day.
So the second thing I wanted to call out is that I had the opportunity to meet up with Mitzi, and her last name is escaping me right now, Mitzi Olson. And we just got to kind of dream together about, she loves books, I love books. We both love public service. And I think we have short-term agreement that we're going to make long-term plans. Everything from, you know, what's involved in getting library cards for all Gladstone students. And there are some kind of unexpected complications with that, but we're going to figure out a path to looking at our collections and giving recommendations in the school library collections about what are best practices, what's emerging in the community, about programming and hearing from students. So students acting in an advisory fashion inward toward the library. And it just felt like a really productive conversation, and it got us together and helped us remember that we're a partnership. So thank you for.
I just want to add really quick. My husband and I moved to Gladstone in 2007, and our neighbors, Gary and Deborah, probably about 2008, started telling us about the library. So this has been, I know this has been a long, long time coming. And I want to thank the current city council members and previous ones too because this is past, this torture's been passed many times, and the end result is it still happened. And that's just a lot of dedication from a lot of different people. Honestly, it's, you know, it was like, it's coming, it's coming, it's not coming, it's not. So you know what? You kind of start to lose faith after a little bit sometimes. But I just want to thank all past and present community members and mayors for sticking with it and building such a beautiful site in our town.
Can I chime in one last thing? We actually, I was one of the families that walked from the elementary school today. We walked with a couple of other families. They have the snack activities on Wednesdays for the steam activities and snacks, and it was packed. I mean, we had to wait our turn to do. They made little pom-pom crafts for little Halloween things today. But yeah, it's just, it's been the energy that happened on the very first grand opening. It's been like that every single time. We've still been in there. So I just, thank you. It's really meaningful, and it's really nice to have somewhere to go.
That's great to hear that they're doing snack activities because when we were planning the grand opening, Mitzi was like, no cake, no cupcake, no nothing. So at least now, maybe we're getting into some regular programming again.
Well, you know, you described the library as being one of the things we hoped it would be, kind of a catalyst for interest in our downtown. And, you know, if you, back when shopping malls were more popular than they seem to be these days, they often have what were called anchor stores. You know, that's where you put the Sears or the JCPenney or the something that was going to attract people and then get them to go to all the other smaller stores. And in a downtown retail district, you need an anchor that draws people in. So right now, we're hopeful that the library will serve part of that purpose. But one of the things that the city has to do is also figure out, how can we provide some of the basic infrastructure needs of a downtown region to make it thrive, to make it a little bit stronger, and to give it the longevity that it ought to have? And so that brings us to the next item on our agenda is Gladstone Urban Renewal. People from my generation hear the words urban renewal, and they think it means what it did back in the 50s and 60s, which was generally cities tearing down older neighborhoods, often neighborhoods where people of color lived, and replacing them with bigger buildings that were supposed to be better for the community because they thought they knew better. Now, the term refers more to really a tax funding strategy, sometimes called tax increment financing. And what it is, is that a city is allowed to designate an area in their community that they hope will be developed and gain in assessed value through development. And during the period that they declare this, have this urban renewal agency in existence, the taxes paid in that agency will be frozen to the various tax districts in which that property sits. So the county, the library district, the school district, the Clackamas Community College District, the taxes paid to those community, to those districts each year is frozen at a level based on the assessed value back when the tax district was formed. And as the assessed value goes up 3% a year, the taxes based on that 3% gain that would have gone to all those other agencies instead goes to the Urban Renewal Agency. When we started our Urban Renewal Agency in Gladstone back in the late 1980s, early 1990s, we included two basic large groups of properties. One was the Seventh Day Adventist property at the corner of 82nd and 205. The thought was back then that that would someday be a big community shopping mall mixed-use area with an off-ramp directly to it from the freeway, just like Clackamas Town Center has. And that was going to be, you know, it was going to create thousands of jobs in the local community and be a real boon to the economy of Gladstone. Well, when it finally came up for the city council to decide whether they were going to do it, they voted it down. So that never happened. But that property was in the Urban Renewal Agency with the hope that it would grow. The other main properties that were in the Urban Renewal Agency originally were city school properties, Gladstone School District properties, the elementary school, the high school. I don't know if GCCF was in there at the time, but eventually came into it. And the thought was originally that urban renewal funds could help develop community recreation programs on school sites that would be shared by the community at large. Back in 2005, almost 20 years ago, I think was the last time that the city actually used urban renewal monies for that specific purpose. It was used to help build the track and field area at the high school. Over the years, we did use some funds to improve sidewalks and roads on areas where students would be walking to get to school. So that was sort of a school-city connection through urban renewal. But recently, the city council took action. It took us most of the summer to do some public hearings and work with the Planning Commission and a consultant that we have to expand our urban renewal district to include all of the downtown retail district, up and down Portland Avenue, and to expand the amount of what's called the maximum indebtedness, which does not mean that we took on debt. It means the maximum amount of revenue that we will be getting from this tax increment financing in order to spend on improvements that we hope will raise the value of properties in that area. And by raising the assessed value of these properties, the hope is that the tax base will grow to the extent that the new income coming from these properties will help replace the income that was lost during the existence of the Urban Renewal Agency. And it will be a good investment for all those tax districts that had foregone some income during the existence of the Urban Renewal. I hope that's a clear explanation. It is a complicated thing. And like I say, the two of the main terms that are used all the time, urban renewal, if you think about the 50s, that's got a negative connotation. And maximum indebtedness, you know, nobody wants to be in debt. They incur a lot of negativity. People see them. Also, you'll notice that when you get your property tax bill, those of you who own property, and I understand they're already in the mail for a lot of people, you will see a line on it that says urban renewal and an amount. Maybe you're paying $200, $300, $400 toward urban renewal. That is not in addition to your other tax bill. That's money that was sort of shaved off the top of a lot of other categories and just it specified where it's going right now. If we didn't have urban renewal, that amount of money If we didn't have urban renewal, that amount of money would be split up back into those other categories. Your bottom line would be exactly the same. So one of the things, again, that's hard to understand about urban renewal is it's not a new tax on people. It's sort of a segregation of existing taxes for new purposes. So with the downtown library in and we're finally seeing some new interest in properties in our downtown area that were not developed for a long period for long periods of time. It's our hope that by investing in infrastructure improvements and maybe widening sidewalks, putting in bike paths, doing other things that making the downtown area more attractive, we will capitalize on that catalyst, you know, that we have in a public library and new interest in Gladstone. Gladstone business owners up and down Portland Avenue for many years have said that the problem we have here is nobody knows we're here. We have tens of thousands of cars that drive past Gladstone on the 205. They drive past Gladstone on McLaughlin. They never find their way into the downtown area. Well, we're hoping that that library and some expenditure and another process that's going on called a town center development may make it possible for us to kind of guide people a little bit more into downtown Gladstone and really help those businesses to grow and thrive. It's an area that's zoned for a lot of mixed use. It can be commercial. It can be residential. We have a need for more housing. We have a need for more businesses, jobs, opportunities for people who are looking for new jobs. And our schools, many of the schools in the district are right along that same corridor. So this is a process that we're that the financial part of it, we've kind of worked through that. And now it's really similar to the development of the library, something where we will hope that people will have a vision for something that can really improve that part of our city and benefit the city and all our taxing districts at once by by really adding to the value, the underlying tax base value of our main portion of our community. We still have city school property in the urban renewal agency. That Seventh Day Adventist property is still in the urban renewal agency. But the focus so far of of this urban renewal process has been to look at downtown revitalization. But as as the superintendent said and others of you said, you know, things that we do in downtown benefit the families who go to school along Portland Avenue and who, you know, who who shop and do other find other services in that area. So we really hope it will have a community wide benefit. And I'm happy to take any questions and try to clarify your understanding of things if I have done a good job. I know we have, we have several people who live within on or within blocks of Portland Avenue. And their interest and willingness to to see the the benefits of the community as a whole put ahead of their own individual interest has really been something that's helped make this possible. So I'm grateful for people who who, like all of you, are willing to put your personal interests aside and think in terms of what's good for the community at large. Comments, questions?
I'm going back to when you were talking about the off ramp where the church property is now. Was that up for it? How is that all church property or does some of that belong to the city?
No.
Or?
All of that property at that time belonged to the Seventh Day Adventist Conference. It was donated to them back in like 1923 after the Chautauqua movement sort of faded out. And the the Gladstone founder who owned that properly property donated it to that church. I don't know at what point the conference headquarters buildings and campground type sites and all that was developed. That may have been after these plans for a shopping mall were talked about. All that precedes me by a long time and I mostly read about it just in old minutes. But the Seventh Day Adventist Church does own all that property. I believe they operate the Somerset Retirement Home in that community. And we've we've often, you know, bounced tried to bounce the idea off them of would it be appropriate to add some new housing or expand the retirement housing onto some of the property there? They usually offered a summer camp meetings, one week for Spanish speaking people, one week for English speaking people. And they have other programs. There is actually a church on that site as well as, you know, administrative headquarter type meetings. But, you know, it is their property. It's not city property. We don't have a say in what's used. We can make some suggestions and hope that as a lot of churches are finding when attendance at church drops and you know, your parking lot is bigger than it needs to be, many churches are choosing to, part of their mission to to provide housing for the community for a segment of the community or just market rate housing, you know, it's a lot of people to do it different ways. But, you know, that is one of the largest pieces of, you know, property under sort of single ownership in the city of Gladstone. So if they say, well, we've got more than we need, we need some revenue, we could sell some property. You know, the people that own sites bigger than an acre or so, we're always saying, hmm, you know, what could that be? What could that be for the city? You're welcome. All right, we have a couple of things that are on the agenda from, oh, go ahead, Jeremiah.
Go ahead.
Oh, that that coming from the school district side. So I'll turn it over to Donna and Jeremiah for the rest.
Well, as a small scrappy school district in a small scrappy city, I think we both take pride in in that designation. We have, we have and maintain and thrive on partnerships with different agencies, organizations, and one of the people that's pretty instrumental in forming those partnerships, but more importantly, retaining those partnerships to bring value that doesn't exist in Gladstone into our community is Ben. And Ben is going to give a presentation that he gave with it to our administrators, slightly different version he gave this summer. And I I hope that it illustrates for you. It's it's the story of one particular partnership, but it kind of tells the story of what it is that we know how to do and because of because Bob taught us. Because Bob Stewart taught us how to do that. I've maintained partners and and keep their interests in mind as well as the school district. So I hope you enjoy Ben's presentation.
And Ben, you might want to use Charlie's mic and and yeah.
Right. Thank you, Jeremiah. And thank you, counselors and school board members for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Ben Bowman and I'm the director of student and family supports in the Gladstone School District. So I've got a presentation up there that you can follow along with. And I'll try to be pretty brief as we go through these. Do I have that?
Arrow up and there you go. Arrow up and down.
Oh, it's best if you can see the mouse on the screen before you push.
Okay, so that's backwards. There we go. So here's our agenda for this evening, relatively brief. I'm going to talk a little bit about the current partnerships that the school district has, speak a little bit about why we partner, why that's a value of our school district. I'll use a case study example and very fun news. I'm going to make an announcement for the first time publicly. You'll be the first to hear. There'll be a a full announcement tomorrow. And then I'll close with what I describe as the Bob Stewart model, which Jeremiah alluded to. Okay, so current partnerships, we work with a lot of different entities, government agencies, nonprofits, for profit businesses, community members. I'm going to ask you all to do something a little different than I did with our administrators. Think to yourself for a moment if you can name maybe three partners that the school district works with. School board members obviously have an advantage here. You probably can name way more than three. But I asked administrators to see if they could name five or 10. And so here's our partial list of partners. And as you can see, these represent broad swaths of government agencies, nonprofits, et cetera. And each one of them is a specific relationship. So some of those names like Life Works Relief Nursery, they're a partner who operates in the Gladstone Center for Children and Families. Some of those partners, Heatherington Foundation. It's a family foundation that provides grants to the district that have been targeted at behavioral health supports. OEA Choice Trust, we won a sizable grant from them to make our staff lounges better. Latino Network, we work with them on what's called screening, brief intervention and referral referral to treatment, Esper to sort of move upstream in how we're providing services to at risk students. But each one of those bullet points represents a story of a relationship that's been cultivated over many years in some cases and that are a critical part of what we do. And this is a partial list that is changing all the time depending on what the opportunities are. So what does it mean to be a partner? It can mean a lot of things. As we've talked about, it can look like different things in terms of who we're partnering with. But in general, we collaborate. We share information and we try to support each other. Sometimes we do, you know, letters of support for grants. Sometimes we have members of our staff serving on committees for other organizations. Oftentimes this is codified with an MOU or a contract and sometimes it isn't. Usually we'll receive some kind of in kind support, cash assistance, staff assistance, but that also varies depending on the partnership. So why we partner? I think the folks in this room probably have a pretty good understanding of what the benefits of a partnership are. But in a district of our size, partnerships allow us to do things that we otherwise wouldn't be able to do. And I think behavioral health support is one of the best examples of this. The Gladstone School District is unlikely to be able to afford to hire mental health professionals directly at the level of need that we have in the district. But what we can do and what we have done is come up with some innovative relationships with folks like Trillium Family Services who provides no cost services to district students in school district buildings and low cost partnerships with Clackamas County at other buildings in the district to provide behavioral health and mental health support services. But the the examples are broader than that. Things like eyeglasses, data analysis, food support, dental care, the staff lounges that I mentioned, all these things we wouldn't have the dollars for in our budget if we were just trying to figure it out on our own. But by working together and building coalitions, we're able to do more. And again, as as we've mentioned, you know, school districts are constantly in a in a challenging budget environment. It feels like in the state where there's sort of ups and downs in funding. And having partnerships who are able to provide resources to the district is a big deal. And in the case of the Gladstone School District, literally millions of dollars are brought into the district as additive dollars above and beyond what we receive from state support. And then finally, and appropriate for this group of people, we're able to amplify our message and our reach and our impact. And I think Gladstone shows up as one of the best examples of that. And I want to especially thank Mayor Milch and, you know, all the members of the council who've been supportive of that effort. This has been highlighted in several media outlets in the Oregonian, on several TV news stations. The governor's office has highlighted this. But we've shown tremendous gains in attendance. We've got a lot of work to do, to be clear, and we are clear right about that in Gladstone. But we saw gains in our attendance when most districts, almost every district in the state was going in the opposite direction. Things were getting worse. And the basic theory of Gladstone shows up was this shouldn't just be a school district thing. This should be an entire community thing where we all work together and are consistent in our message. And when the mayor shows up at a public event wearing a T shirt and you all are putting lawn signs in your yards, there's a bigger movement that frankly yields more success. I think we have a guest. I'm going to keep going. So oftentimes we get asked, how do you build partnerships? What do what does it take to build a partnership? And of course, it can look differently for different partners, but I wanted to use a case study. This is one of my favorite examples. Raise your hand if you've other than maybe city councilor. Raise your hand if you've heard of Vision to Learn before. Okay, so Vision to Learn is a very innovative, new nonprofit organization. And the basic premise of Vision to Learn is there are tens of thousands of kids in this state. This is a national group, but in Oregon, they say about 40,000 kids who need glasses but don't have them. And if you're a kid who needs glasses but doesn't have them, you might think you're not very smart. You might get distracted in school. You might act out. You might get put on in a category for a teacher of a student who's like, you know, got behavioral problems. And what they found, and this isn't just anecdotal, they've got research from Johns Hopkins about this, when the only intervention is that the kid gets a pair of glasses, academic achievement skyrockets. In fact, the equivalent to months of additional schooling for those kids just by giving them a pair of glasses. So what Vision to Learn is able to do is able to provide those glasses at no cost to the kid and no cost to the family through philanthropic support, but also through Medicaid reimbursement, which is a really important tool here for us to use. So basically what happened is we heard about this idea. We did our own investigation. I pitched it to Bob at the time. We did our due diligence. We did a financial and legal review. We talked to other districts who had done this partnership. We signed an agreement and we implemented it. And I think we were the second district in the state to do this. And not all districts are going to be able to benefit from this service because they have finite ability in their beginning stages to do it. But because we're able to move quickly and jump at opportunities we see, a bunch of kids in our district have glasses now that otherwise wouldn't have had glasses. And we were doing a tour of GCCF not too long ago with some of our partner agencies. And one of the preschool teachers who I had never met before highlighted the story of this kid who got glasses from Vision to Learn, who was having serious behavioral issues before and hadn't had any problems for a couple of months since he got the pair of glasses. So very exciting and very cool partnership that we're proud of. Okay, so here's the announcement. This is breaking news. Oregon City Together in partnership with the Gladstone School District and the Oregon City School District has just been awarded a 1.8 million dollar grant from the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. You may be familiar with the term SAMSA grant. A public announcement is going to go out tomorrow. And I want to offer a huge thanks to our partners at Oregon City Together. I think this is a great example. Gladstone was probably unlikely to win this grant on our own. But by partnering with our friends and neighbors in Oregon City, we had a very competitive grant application, you know, a bunch of communities across the country apply for these grants and we were awarded. In the ensuing months and years, we are hoping to build even more partnerships and collaborate as closely as we can to implement this grant and to benefit our our students and our kids. The purpose of the grant is to prevent substance abuse and to provide mental health support. So that little QR code, I hope it's big enough and we can get the link out to you if it's not. They are in the process now of collecting volunteers who want to sit on work groups, who are interested in serving on the steering committee. And I think for our purposes as Gladstone, it's important that we have Gladstone voices on that on those committees and work groups. So it's not just an Oregon City thing. This really is a partnership. So city councilors, school board members, there are plenty of opportunities if you have the capacity. I think what their goal is for the first three months is about 10 hours total that you could offer to the work in, I think, six or seven meetings. But there's more information on the QR code. And again, we can send that link out. But pretty exciting news for for our community to get a 1.8 million dollar federal grant is very exciting.
Can I interrupt for just a second?
You may.
There is a large truck that seems to be blocking access to the ballot box outside. Okay, so I don't know if anybody here knows anything about it. The thing might be, if you could check on it, Mark. Thank you. Sorry for that interruption. Go ahead, Ben.
I'm just relieved that they weren't disappointed in my remarks. So I'm going to close by talking about what I describe as the Bob Stewart model. I used a quote from Yates that I love and makes me think of Bob. There are no strangers here, only friends you haven't met yet. And this sort of embodied Bob's approach to the school district. Bob would come back from a fundraiser or from a community meeting or from a conference and you'd have a new idea about who we could partner with, how we could access more dollars for the district, different ways that we could stand out and and punch above our weight class. So I think this is something that the Gladstone School District does better than almost any district in the state and particularly districts of this size. We try to say yes. We almost never try to say no. We want to make partnerships work. We want to expand opportunities for the students in this district. We pursue grants that we that other districts might not take a chance at. We don't let the size of the district dissuade us from applying for large grants like the SAMSA grant, like support from different family foundations. And it's been really, really successful. Bob in particular was like very much an anti-status quo guy. He totally believed that, you know, the way things have been or tradition shouldn't limit us and limited our imagination of what we could do. And I said, what what I the remarks I offered to my colleagues in the district was, you know, Bob is retired now. And I think a lot of folks in the district are very excited to have Jeremiah. But now it's it's up to all of us to sort of embrace that spirit and embrace the the belief that partnerships improve opportunities for all kids in the district. And you are a critical partner, like maybe near the top of the list because all of our constituents are your constituents and vice versa with little tweaks with weird boundaries. But we appreciate all that you've done to support our work and hope to continue to be thoughtful and productive partners with you all as well. Jeremiah, anything you wanted to add to any of that?
No, beautifully done. Thank you.
No, beautifully done. Thank you.
Cool.
Thank you for letting us be the first to hear that great announcement. That's exciting. And, you know, as I said at the beginning, it's wonderful that we continued this partnership, these joint meetings, and have that sense of connection with one another and mutual support. And we are one of the rare cities where the school district boundary and the city boundary are almost the same. You know, North Clackamas School District extends over a lot of cities, and you don't have the opportunity for quite the same connection with local government. But it shapes the personality of the city, the connection that people have. You know, I often mention Ralph Mateel has this Facebook page, Growing Up in Gladstone, for people who grew up here 40, 50, 60 years ago. They remember their school experiences. They remember their teachers. We still celebrate John Wetton's birthday every year, and when that's coming up next week, I think. You know, the connection with the school and the city has long been one of the strengths and unique things about this community. And the city, you know, that was just because of proximity. But the deliberate choice to make partnerships with county agencies that can help children, young families, and other community groups that can really strengthen what you do has been a great strength of the district. And so I'm grateful to you for reminding us of that, for showing us that list, which may not even be complete.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mer. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Other comments, questions from city council members, from school board members?
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Now, we want to hear some statistical information regarding enrollment.
Sure.
I'll try to tie this in with, to some degree, with the presentation or the activity, rather, that we're going to participate in next. But one of the things we brought, just looking at past agendas, one of the things we've brought to this meeting is Gladstone School District Enrollment Report. It's been a curiosity at first when enrollment started to decline. And that happened, that started to happen between the 2015-16 school years and the 2016-17 school year. And so this is, I barely touched this chart. This is a chart we've brought you exactly this time last year. But I wanted to just give you an update on where things are. There's a, there's a single change, and one piece of data does not make a trend. And I'll make that really clear. One piece of data does not make a trend. It's not a pattern. It's not a pattern. But it is an anomaly relative to the recent past. So you see a nine-year history of enrollment fall over fall. And then the second column over is that obviously the percentage change from the previous. Most of those numbers have been negative historically, and that was exacerbated during the pandemic. You can find those years pretty easily with your eyes. And then finally, the third column, what is that percentage change from that starting point, 2015-16, excuse me? The, the difference is that this year, we start the year with 21 more students than we had last year. And that's a small number, but it's a small number that we're proud of and we're happy about. And relieved, quite frankly, to see that. Because of the way school funding is allocated, we're never held to any one year's enrollment number. We're always funded on the higher of the two, of the current or the previous years. And so we've been in that look-back period, which is a real drain on the budget, and it makes things challenging for the school district. So this is just one hopeful glimmer, and I sure hope I'm here next year with, still not a pattern, but two points of line. Two points make a line. I know that. I remember that from geometry.
I read that in Portland School District, from the years just prior to the pandemic, to now they are at about a 17% drop in enrollment, which amounted to about 4,000 students, which in a district that size is the equivalent of 10 schools. The decline in enrollment that was projected last year forced the, the school district to take what was a very emotional and difficult decision to actually drop a couple of teaching positions in the Gladstone School District, one at the kindergarten level, one at the first grade level, as I recall. And so the difference between closing the equivalent of 10 schools and, you know, changing two teaching positions, and ultimately, some movement around meant it was not a real loss in staffing overall. But I'm glad to see that, that maybe we're going to see a change in this trend. And what we've been saying since 2018 or so on this issue is part of this could be due to the cost of housing. Families with children, of course, you know, some of it is a demographic change we're seeing nationwide. People are delaying having children. They're choosing not to have children at all. They're getting married later. And the cost of living is higher, and the cost of raising children may be a deterrent to some potential families. But one big factor is the cost of housing. And for a number of years, we thought that maybe families were leaving Gladstone to move farther away. I have a child in, that was in my grandson's second class last year, who lives in Albany, Oregon, and commutes to Gladstone Schools. And she says, it's because my mom couldn't find a house in Gladstone that we could afford. That was, that was the place we could afford to live. But the schools are important enough that they'll still come to Gladstone. But, you know, if we lose families to fast-growing areas outside of the city, then that has an impact on the, on the revenue of the school. But if we can do some things as a city that makes it possible to get more housing, more, you know, entry-level starter-home-level housing for young families, maybe we can also, this is another way that we can kind of partner in reversing this trend and helping, helping the school district. Any other questions?
What's the, what's the factor on that? Like, that was one of my questions. How far out do the non-residents come from? And you said Albany. That's pretty, pretty good.
I think that's an anomaly.
Right. So I mean, so are we getting Lake Oswego, Oregon City, Milwaukee? And what's the, what's the reason they're coming to Gladstone Schools? I mean, from where they're at?
So, good question. They primarily come from Oregon City and North Clackamas School Districts. And so geography definitely plays into that. So I'll tell you some anecdotal, some conversations I've had, but we have actually prepared a, we've prepared surveys for students transferring in and also students transferring out because we have this curiosity, and we don't want to make, we don't want to just rest on our assumptions. I'll give you, I'm going to fumble the numbers a little bit, but this year, we, we let people go when they choose to go elsewhere. Not every district does that. But I think we had 31 students transfer out over the summer and 131 transfer in. And that's a pretty common ratio. What hasn't changed for us is that the young lady that the mayor spoke about is one of 482 students who don't live in, inside of Gladstone, who are inside of our schools. So anecdotally, sometimes it's personal experience that they want. We really pride ourselves. One of Bob's sayings was, we're very small, but we offer the full meal deal. We have five programs of study at the high school. And, you know, that, that in and of itself allows for potential of career exploration and kind of early career experiences that can get kids into, get kids into, you know, thinking beyond the theoretical about what their next step is. I'll give you one example of that. We have for you tonight Gladstone Shows Up T-shirts. Once the yards, there's a lot of yard signs right now. I don't, once those go away, we aim to put up this year's version of the Gladstone Shows Up or Gladstone Present Day yard signs for our attendance campaign. And what's different this year, because we received a CTE revitalization grant from the state, we were able to invest in some equipment where we don't have to go to Office Depot to have these things made. We can pay, we can pay ourselves, and our kids can have the experience of designing, of producing, and marketing, this is our marketing program, and these kids are making stuff. It's really fun to see. And I've spent an inordinate amount of time maybe talking about them. We highlighted them during our last board meeting. But being able to be on the volleyball team and also be in the band and also be a club leader and not have those things necessarily conflict is pretty special.
And I'm sure you partner with, like, most school districts I do, right, with the college, Clackamas. You have deals going with Clackamas. And then do you have like an apprenticeship program? That would be, I mean, if I had a child and they want, you know, I'd say, they said, I want to go to college. I'd look for a school district to operate a very strong apprenticeship program. Do you, and you have those too?
We have credit offerings through OIT and Clackamas Community College. We don't currently have an apprenticeship program. But we do have, I'll give you the example of, you know, Lauren Watts has been a really active partner with us. And so when he had his grant opening last year, he has a training center. It's pretty, have you seen that? Yeah. So getting our kids in there to see that and literally be interviewed, kind of soft-interviewed on that day. And, you know, a couple, two months later, I see the same student who's no longer a student driving a Watts truck. It's pretty cool.
And I want to see if Stacy or Tracy can repeat to me the statement that you often make to students who graduate from Gladstone High School. What did they find out when they get to college? Tell me what you always tell them.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I repeat myself. So when my oldest daughter, she was rooming with another girl when she was at Oregon, University of Oregon, I have one duck and one beaver. Don't mix them up. She, she and her roommate, Jaden, would say that when they would meet students from that college, from other schools, and they would hear about their experiences, they just didn't realize how lucky they were to be students of Gladstone because they said, other schools don't do the things that our school did, doesn't offer the same opportunities and don't have teachers that, you know, do the airband and whatever. So they, it's like that hindsight is 2020. But they often talk about how they just don't hear about experiences from other students like they do at Gladstone.
I hear about the tradition each year of the East Coast trip that juniors and seniors get to take once during their junior or senior year, and how much learning and exposure they get to that, and how that has continued on for years with the dedication of some really great volunteers and teachers that help with it. But it's the kind of thing that, that most schools wouldn't, wouldn't have that and wouldn't offer it to everybody and make it possible for anybody to be able to participate. But they've said that they haven't had, turned kids away because of financial reasons. It's something that's widely supported and an opportunity that's shared by quite a few.
And one other thing, and I apologize to the board members because you hear this all the time, but just in terms of that, with, with my youngest daughter, and you talked about internships, but she was given a camera by Jake Ellingson. And he has now built this program. If you haven't seen it, you need to go see it, this kind of media program. So again, not the college route. But she, because of Gladstone, because of the teachers and the people who believed in her in Gladstone, she went to Spain in August. I am into Spain. She, her freshman year, she got herself an internship at Oregon State University just by the collective support of educators in the district. She had that wherewithal to get herself an internship. Now she's a paid head of digital media at Oregon State for the wrestling team, works for the football team, and travels all the time. And that's all from Gladstone. She would not have received that same, I know in my heart she would not have received that same education or that, those same opportunities or that same confidence.
Okay, I know. I went and spoke with them, and he's come to the senior, or the community center now, like three times with the students and let them set up and let them film our, you know, fire prevention and stuff, and those kids are smart.
When you have an opportunity, go, go, go see, go see what he's building. It's amazing. And Stacy, I'll defer to.
I guess I'll just add that, like, and I've shared this before of, and it's been said, but just to reiterate, the opportunities of the small district because of partnerships, because of the dedication of our educating, the educational staff, and that's everyone. The close-knit, like, care our students get in Gladstone, the connectedness that they feel, I just, I don't, you just, that's hard to find elsewhere. And if you think that a small town doesn't help grow big thoughts, you're wrong. Because like, it's incredible what, when you see your kid graduate and then what they're doing. I thought, oh, it'll, he'll still want small, like, he won't be ready for anything big. And everything that he experienced through, from GCCF to the high school, set him up for success. And I just couldn't be more proud to see where he's going. And I contribute it to, attribute it to the experiences and the support he had from five years to 18. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? All right, our last item on the agenda is really a question. How should we invest?
How should we invest? Director Long, can I ask you to define shret? I'm kidding. Okay, I'm a, I'm a school teacher, so this is going to be a school teacher activity. Okay? Last year, and this is, this is a version of some, there are three connected activities that I'm working at each school and with other, other communities, sub-communities, focal populations within our, within our town to generate some discussion. This is related to the fact that the Gladstone School District bond, current bond expires in 2027. And it's been no secret that that's been something that the school board has been discussing for about the last two years. And it really ramped up last year. And the reason for that ramp up is to, you know, that bond, when it hits 2027, falls to zero. It's very high. It's very high now, but it falls to zero at that point. And we convened last year a facilities committee to look at long-term, the long-term prospects of our facilities and the state of affairs. And they came out with some recommendations at the concluding meeting of that, of that group. They came out with three tiers of need. The first is warm, it could be described as warm, safe, and dry. So security improvements, vestibule improvements, line-of-sight improvements, building envelope, HVAC roofing. That's, that pretty much captures what those things are. And to the, to the members of the community sat on that committee and the few staff members who joined them, that was, I think I can speak for them and say that was obvious. Those are the, those are the basics. We must do these things. The second tier is programmatic, programmatic improvements. Like, wow, it would be cool if we could do that, that, that. The third tier is, wow, that would be really nice. The understanding, and it's been cemented for me since, since that group concluded its work, is that there will not be a, there will not be an opportunity to go, go do all those things. It wouldn't be financially responsible. It wouldn't be fair to the taxpayers in the city. And so what we're asking you to do tonight is participate like other community members are doing throughout this month and next in a, in one of three exercises, but this is the one, where you're going to have a list of everything that's on tier two and everything that's on tier three. So these, I didn't, I didn't put these things on, in these categories. The group of community members did. And so what I've prepared for you is we're really asking you to kind of think about and answer, answer the question one of three ways per, per item. And that is, I can support this. This is so obvious to me. This is a need that, yes, and I'm going to put a checkmark in this box. The second is, I might be able to if I understood the need a little bit more or the why behind this, or I had some data behind it, or I knew how much it costs. Like, I'm not an automatic on this one, question mark. And the third one, and this might be a little surprising, these go in, for me, these are inverted in terms of importance. The third one is, I cannot support this. This is silly. The third one is I cannot support this. This is silly. Find another way to do this. This isn't needed. Just put an X there. And to me, from my eyes, when I'm coming back to the board to give a report about what community members have said in patterns, it's more important to know what the community can't support than what it can. Because we just won't present those things. We just won't present those things when the school board determines that they should seek some version of a replacement bond. I should probably just take the moment while I still have the mic to say that that might be in May. If that were to be in May, the board would have to, to make a referral probably in late February. It could also be next year. It could also be in the fall of 27. And that, that is the school boards to decide with the collective wisdom of the political, political advice we get and probably some polling that will go on as well. But all of this feeds into that. At some point, we absolutely will need replacement funds for the critical infrastructure. In our, you know, roofs come due every 20 to 30 years. It's really, it's not that different with, with our kind of construction. So you won't see any roofs on these posters. These are, these are the wishlist things that we're really asking you to think critically about. And just fine and totally encouraged. Well, what I'm going to do is I'm going to pass out posters like this. We're just going to place them around. So maybe ask every, push your pizza to the edge. These will be around. We're going to go, should we go clockwise? We'll go clockwise. And you're going to just think about, ask questions about, have discussion about whatever you'd like to do. And at the end of the day, you get a score sheet. And you don't, you don't need to make it personalized. Just if you wouldn't, wouldn't mind. So I can kind of think about the data. I'd ask that you either put a B or a C. With the board or I'm with the city. And here's how we're thinking about this. And so it's kind of rudimentary, pretty simple. But hopefully you can get a picture of what the, what the need is based on the images selected.
Can you explain real quick? You said we have a bond right now. It's going to be up in 2027.
Yes, sir.
It's high.
Yes.
But it's going to drop to zero. Can you explain how that happens?
Well, when that bond, when that bond expires, when that bond's paid off.
It'll be paid off in 27 then.
2027.
Okay, I didn't, I, I didn't hear you say it would be paid off. I heard you say it would drop to zeros.
No, the impact to taxpayers would, would drop to zero.
Okay, thank you.
And I know, I know that's, that's concerning to lots of folks and that it's been high. And so there's discussion amongst the board that that what we seek will likely not be an exact continuation, but I don't want to speak for the board. It's not my place.
Would that be a new bond totally or would that be a renewal?
It would be a new bond totally. Okay, so I'll pass out the homework. And then I will distribute these around and then it's, it's structured, but it's not structured. One sheet front and back, one sheet front and back. They may not get distributed in the exact order. So you may have to do a little hunting to match the picture with the item.
For city council members who maybe don't have kids in schools and aren't familiar with the acronyms. JWE is John Wetton Elementary, GLK is, or WLK is Cracksburger Middle School. GHS is the high school and GCCF, I don't know if it's actually on here, is the Gladstone Center for Children and Families.
Yes. So Chair Diggs is going to come around and collect both the, both the homework and the prompt. I would just be really curious to know, I don't know, big, big patterns? Themes, what, what stood out to you? You weren't ready, you weren't really prompted or given a heads up that this was going to happen. So I'm always interested in improving the process and/or what stood out.
There were redundancies in the tier two and three. A couple of them. The one I was interested in was space for community groups to come in and utilize the facilities. What does that look like? Cause Gladstone has a number of facilities between the city and the school as well as other groups that people can come in and utilize. Obviously, sports and recreation fields receive a lot of use, but it looked like a lot of that was focused inside of the building. So what do you imagine and what's on the docket?
Sure. Well, nothing's on the docket. But there are several that, that even use the same terminology. So community, community space, community room would be very, like the best example we have of that is the Danielson Room. Where it's a discreet room, but it's really flexible and can be modified and used a number of different ways by different user groups. It's used all day during the day by students, but it can also be used by families who come for classes in the evening. So that, that'd be like replicating that in other places.
Danielson Room is at the Gladstone Center for.
Yeah. Sorry about that. But when you have community use of your buildings, another, another one of those items was secure community use. Sounds awfully similar and it looks like pictures of gates and that's actually what it is. It's like, how do we make sure that when the, when folks are in the, when there's a basketball tournament all weekend long and there's one custodian on duty, we know that the rest of the building is secure and that shenanigans aren't happening in other parts of the building. Actually, that's what it means.
Yeah.
And then community partner spaces, we have a number of those partners, sorry, Don. A number of those partners wind up being in an unused classroom, for example. So there's a picture of a Latino network that they're occupying a whole classroom, but they only need a smaller space. And so again, a lot of the, the ways in which we want to make, improve our buildings are evident at the Center for Children and Families. Where there's, there's clear classroom space, but there's also clear community space and there's also clear office space. So that's, that's kind of like taking that theme and extending it to the other buildings.
Thank you.
Jeremiah, can you explain again, what was on the tier one projects?
Sure, I can follow. I'll, I'll explain it. Why don't I do this? I'll explain it spiritually and then I'll send you a list. Because it's long, it's long. So it's, it's HVAC, it's ventilation. It is roof repairs, is repair of the envelope. We were able to put a fresh coat of paint on the front of Cracksburger this, this year that provides a pretty good example. I mean, paint sounds almost a little silly, but it does protect the envelope of the building and it, and it really helps with water intrusion. And so most of our buildings need, and they also, and then it's not a small thing that it provides pride of ownership and demonstrates pride of ownership and demonstrates property value. So there's that. There is ADA access is on that list. So we have a number of lifts that they help with accessibility, but they almost do the opposite when they don't function anymore. Because they, people see that they're there and they have that need for it to access the lower classrooms in Cracksburger. But if that lift is not functioning, it can be perceived as insulting to somebody who has that, has that accessibility need. Accessibility needs, the other place where accessibility is a problem is at the high school in the gym area, because we're, we have upper areas where the cheer practice room, the mat rooms are. Those are, those are pretty old technology lifts that aren't made anymore. And we can't find replacement parts for them either. So they need to be, they need to be replaced.
When you say lifts, you mean elevators, right?
Oh, it's a it would elevate. Yes, it's intended to elevate. It's a spiral. The only other one I believe is at Mount Bachelor Ski Resort. And so we were kind of talking with them and they were talking with us about who's going to buy one another's parts. But it's, it's actually a pretty neat functional technology. It's on a ratchet system and you can be able to get, get up, but you would replace it with, with an elevator.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think I'll stop ad libbing there. Jackie, and I'll send you, I'll send you a list you can share with.
That's fine. Just as feedback, as a first time looking at this, understanding that there is a tier one of projects that must be done. But it might've been helpful to see what was included in those.
I think you're right. Thank you.
Well, Jeremiah, you referenced the phrase warm, safe and dry, which often came up in long range facilities planning. And I think, and I think it's an easy way to remember the roof and, you know, the HVAC and the fire panel system and all those things. It's like the, the functional.
And that's for all schools, all buildings? Okay.
Yes. Another, let me continue ad libbing. Another, another pretty easily understood, but it has to be described as. Another, another, pretty easily understood, but it has to be described as locking vestibules. So schools anymore ought to have locking vestibules, secure vestibules where access into the building is controlled. And forced through, through an office that's occupied at all times. So that visitors must demonstrate that they're safe. Safe to the school community. When I was reading an article recently about decline of enrollment in Portland schools and they went and surveyed people to find out why people aren't. Coming to the schools, some of it was about making changes to charter schools or homeschooling or private schools. But one of the questions and one of the responses that came up a lot was concerned about security. How close is this school to an unsupervised park area where some, but some stranger could be out there doing who knows what? Within access and visibility of a school. So the security issues are, are in the minds of a lot of parents these days. It's, it's the world that we have come to know. But so that kind of, you know, pushing the buzzer to get in. And all the rest is, is where facilities are, you know, where they can contribute to some of that security. There are no cell phone pouches in tier one.
That is what we had to share.
All right. I hope you'll all complete your homework and give them, share this feedback. Some of these community meetings have already taken place, I understand, but there are still one or two left on the schedule. So we published the schedule for about half of them. We wanted to get, make sure that some of them were in the GLAD report so that folks could access them. And I would say fifty percent of our attendees so far are parents. They're community members, often fixed income, retired. Who got the GLAD report and walked in and they had real things to say. So it's been really beneficial. So if you have a family connection for a particular school, you might want to, you know, provide some input for that. But this is. You do, you're required to do these facility evaluations about every, how, how often? In order to access state grants, you need to do them every ten years. So we didn't do one ten years ago, but we have just completed. The one that, that basically is a gateway into accessing state grants around seismic repairs. There's a lot of grants we can bring to bear. To augment what would be, what would be asked voters. So this may not, you know, if you have children in elementary school or, or the Gladstone Center right now. You know, what happens here is going to influence what things will be like at Cracksburger or at the high school when they get to that age. So think ahead. You know, and once again, think in terms of what benefits the community as a whole, not just your own children where they are right now, if you have them. Or if you have, you know, families and friends with children. And thank you so much for hosting. Thank you to Gladstone Pizza who prepared the pizza for us tonight. And they are one of those local businesses in our downtown that we hope will thrive with a little more. Connection to the rest of the community and a little more investment in the infrastructure that will support other growth there. And it's a place where I, as I understand, no, I wasn't glad, it was somebody else, or maybe it was Gladstone Pizza too. We have a library opening, you know, again, brought people right down to that vicinity and, and helped them. So. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Thank you for, for listening. Thank you for contributing to a real. Work session feel on this last project and I hope that our contribution will be helpful. And we are adjourned at seven oh four PM.